Welcome everyone to the August 5th, 2025 woke session of the Mayor and City Council meeting is now called to order. First up, we have Mr. Eric Dyke with the Jonathan Hager House Visitor Center renovation project.
Yeah, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And Kay Osmer, sorry.
With me Kay from our Recreation Department. Some of you may recall, we earlier we brought before you, we were looking for additional funding for a project that's already underway, which is Jonathan Hager House Visitors Center renovation. We've already received funding. We're actually moving forward. The project has been out and we'll actually have prices next week on the Phase One, which is the run of, which is actually gutting the area and then getting it ready for displays. Phase Two is what we're working on now for grant funding and that sort of thing. But we thought we'd come in to at least give you an update on it. If you've never been there or haven't really seen it, right now it's empty. We've taken all the artifacts out. We've got them properly stored. And so now we're preparing for the project, which is about 600 square feet of renovation. But I'm gonna just turn it over to Kay and she's gonna walk you through the, through the project and where we're at at this point.
Hi there, everyone. And so I'm gonna do a brief overview of the project, how we got to this point and what we have planned for the future. I did do a presentation on this project at a conference earlier this year, so I'm using part of my slide from that. So as you know, we have the Jonathan Hager House. This has been a historic house museum here with the city since the 1950s owned and operated by the municipality. The adjacent building has been operational since the 1960s and not much has happened to it since then. I will go ahead and ask council members and mayor who are present, how many of you actually have been in this building? Okay, so actually majority of you. We hear many times that a lot of members of the community have actually never stepped foot in this building or did not realize it was open to the public or had anything inside of it. So we are basically looking to renovate this into a new visitor center project to make it an additional destination, not just the historic house, but also another place to learn about local history and Jonathan Hager, our town founder. So I started with the city in April of 2018. So I have just a couple of photos of kind of what the space used to look like when I first started. As you can see, it is a very small space, quite dark, and it was very crowded. So miscellaneous items added to the space over the years with historic photos, but it mostly contained historic artifacts that were found during, during the archaeological dig in the 1950s. Very tiny gift shop, but as you can see, it was very crowded and outdated. One of the main things we wanted to work on was improving the interpretation in the space. So right now, the tour is 100% spoken. So your tour guide is the experience. We'd like to give the option for those who cannot do a house tour or do not have time for a house tour to explore on their own and learn some of the same information that may not be able to do the house tour. So these are the current collections that we just took down this spring and summer. We worked with another state entity to help remove and store these artifacts for safe, safekeeping until we're ready to reinstall them. So we took down all the tags and everything, placed them in archival boxes, and we'll be reusing some of these items and the new displays, which I'll come to in a little bit. So just a brief overview, we are a small museum. So we have limited hours. We're open about seven months out of the year from about April through October, two days a week with no full-time staff. So very limited resources. So our main goals were to increase visitation, increase our awareness and interest in the site, increase revenue, improve museum standards, and create a legacy for preservation of the site and just to improve the overall visitor experience. So this all started back in 2019. We did a open house kind of workshop with city staff and a consultant to brainstorm what we wanted this space to be. So this is just kind of a brief snapshot of all the things we talked about. Artifacts that were important to the community, historic topics, time periods, what was important about the house, all sorts of things. And we picked out like five specific things we wanted to highlight. And we put together a schematic exhibit plan. So with this, we determined 10 designated spaces or exhibits that would highlight different parts of our history. So the first one covers Jonathan Hager and his legacy with the city and his family. Remnants of colonial life, which would recreate one of our most popular exhibits from the previous 1960s exhibit. A section on the transformation from Elizabeth Town to Hagerstown, the updated display of Little High School. We created a theater space that we could do videos or presentations with a digital display focusing on the house's architecture and history, and then finally the restoration of the house and any remaining site archaeology. So this was an initial plan we had done. This is just a little rendering, so you can get an idea of what that fireplace design would look like. So we're looking at a faux fireplace at the back of the space that would have a very large TV. So we have plans to do some interpretive videos if we wanted to do a lecture series or presentation of any kind, school group tours, those could all be possible in this small space. During COVID, we had a slow start to all of this. So we started looking at funding options. And in the meantime, we installed what's called a wayside exhibit. So these are our small panels installed around the walking trail from the house. So this is kind of how we kickstarted our project. We got funding from that from the Maryland Heritage Area Authority. We already had some funding allocated in our capital improvement project. And then we finally found sources for Phase One of this project with the Appalachian Regional Commission. We contracted with Ion Design to help us actually design the exhibits. Again, we don't have any designated full-time staff, so this definitely needed outside help. So they helped to finalize exhibit titles, text, image selection. We're in the process of finalizing our artifact selection and creating text labels for all of that. We also worked on color palettes, finishes, all those sorts of things, what the flooring would look like. And then I'll just conclude with kind of a picture of the current rendering. So we currently have a house model. We hope in a Phase Three to update with a new house model. Also, the table that's featured in the center of the room would hopefully be a Phase Three. So we're right now in Phase One. As Mr. Dyke mentioned, we have gutted the space and are just about to start demolition of the existing cabinetry and will completely redo the space. So that's flooring, lighting, wall treatments, electric, all of that moved back into the space and the new retrofitted. And hopefully with Phase Two, within the next two years, we will actually fabricate and install these designs. So we're trying to update the public as we go along, as we have funding sourced and what's phase of the project we're in. But I just wanted to give that for your information. So as I mentioned, Phase One is mostly paid through the CIP and the Appalachian Regional Commission. And we hope to do the video production and additional components as funding permits. Questions?
Thanks for the update.
That was a lot of information in a very short time.
Probably be a presentation or office because that would go on time first 17 minutes in a while. That was great.
I would say that Kay has been absolutely instrumental in this whole thing. I mean, she started as a seasonal or a part-time employee with us in 2018. It's taken that long to secure the funding and get, you know, all this put together. It's a very, you know, it's 600 square feet. It's, it's a fraction of the size of this room, and yet it's a, it's just complicated. The funding source alone is what's complicated.
And it takes a lot of expertise and knowing that you're spending your money wisely is important too.
Yeah. So the bids will come in next Tuesday. Jim will probably bring those to you at the end of the month. Hopefully we'll get a good prices on that. The ARC funding, the ARC funding is 100,000 for that project, 100,000 from the city. And we're working on the next Phase Two, which is we're looking to get 150,000 from ARC for Phase Two because the cabinetry and all that is very expensive.
It would all be custom-built, specific to the size of the space, specific compartments and cases designed to fit our artifacts.
Okay, question from someone that's from Benin, Idaho. So who do you, as far as who goes in it now? Like, what are the tours like now? Because I said you were hoping to get more schools involved and more school tours.
Yes.
What is the, who are the people that you usually cater to?
So school tours, school tours look a little bit differently right now after COVID. But our standard operation is we have one part-time employee. We're open Fridays and Saturdays. We open at 10:00 AM and we currently operate with tours every hour. So for the most part, the tour guide would wait in the museum or outside on the porch to greet visitors, wait for that tour time to start. If no one arrives for a tour, we keep that space open. So people can kind of come and go. You have people walking their dogs coming through or maybe riding a bike who might just pop in and say, oh, what's this? And you might have a 10, 15-minute conversation with them. If you.
So it doesn't have to be necessarily scheduled? You can just kind of.
You can just drop in, yes. So currently, yes, we're not busy enough quite yet to have scheduled tours. If you do have a tour at, let's say, 10 o'clock, you would then have to lock that facility and go on a house tour. So if you pop in at 10:30 and there's a house tour on, you can't physically get into that building. The big side of it too is when you have larger groups, when we do have extra staffing or for events like Fall Fest where we're open to the public, having the ability for there to be more information, they can do self-guided tours or ways to have extra experiences right now that aren't 100% dependent on the tour. Because if you've got a bus tour that wants to come and you've got 50 people, but we can only fit 20 in the house, what do you do with the remaining 30 people? So to have more experiences, opportunities, things for them to explore while they wait for a house tour is the other benefit of this. So currently, we might not be able to facilitate that with our current staffing, but we're hoping and planning for growth within the next decade or two. I also am looking ahead at our next tricentennial. So the house was purchased in 1739 or not all that far away from 2039. So I'm looking ahead and trying to plan ahead for that growth that we will become more. Well, I might not be either, but that we were planning ahead for the future for growth and making that possible.
The other part is, is that, is that where the.
So we're currently recognized as a national historic site on the National Register of Historic Places with a state-level significance. So even though we are a town founder, we are recognized as a state-recognized historic site. So bringing in more tourism and opportunity statewide is another goal there.
Well, the Museum of Fine Arts is close.
Across the street.
Between the museum and this facility is the Bock Oil, which the museum plans on renovating and expanding. So eventually what we're hoping for is that that whole area will be this museum cultural and tie into that whole area, correct? So when they renovate Bock Oil, eventually when that happens, we'll even be closer. And so that should also help bring more guests, more people to our, to our facility. So.
Any other questions?
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Margie Jo with the 2026 and 2030 Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program.
Hello.
And Rachel.
So some of this information may sound very familiar. We had presented a few weeks ago, but we had been asked to come back and provide a little bit broader context around the, the five-year consolidated plan. So we'll just jump right in. City of Hagerstown is an entitlement community for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, which is a program of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. Every five years, HUD requires the development of a consolidated plan, which is a strategic framework for addressing identified community needs. FY26 marks the start of a new five-year plan, which was developed through extensive data analysis and research to identify the city's most pressing needs that can be addressed with HUD funding. This body could approve the selection of Urban Design Ventures LLC to act as our consultants to engage with the community to develop this plan, which consists of three parts, a housing homeless and community and economic development needs assessment, a housing market analysis, and long-term strategies to meet priority needs. Activities that support these goals outlined in the consolidated plan are implemented through our annual action plans. Each year, we prepare an annual action plan detailing the specific projects that we propose for HUD funding. We've been notified by HUD that our grant, excuse me, our grant entitlement amount for FY26 will be $791,400. And we estimate that our program income for the upcoming year will be $75,000. FY26 will also mark the first year that the city anticipates receiving funding through HUD's Home Investment Partnerships Program in the amount of $361,181.17. In this first year, the city has agreed to provide a match amount of $138,818.83 to qualify as a participating jurisdiction in this program. However, as Scott had mentioned previously, home funding is a bit tentative right now pending passage of the final adopted federal budget. So Mayor and City Council's approval of the consolidated plan and annual action plan is required to request and receive our annual entitlement. And our department is required to submit the approved con plan and annual action plan no later than August 16th.
Public input was a part of the process to develop the consolidated plan and annual action plan. Our first public hearing took place on December 5th, 2024. Our consultants for the consolidated plan conducted numerous interviews with community partners and city departments and coordinated a resident survey as well as collecting and interpreting local, regional, and regional data around those populations prioritized by HUD funding support. A second public hearing was held Wednesday, July 16th, 2025, to receive any comments regarding the published draft con plan. The con plan and annual action plan were also placed on display for public comment during a period from June 18th to July 18th. No comments were received during that time. The summary of planned activities and funding amounts have been included in your packet, and these are similar to the activities we focused on in previous years. The CDBG portion of the plan supports multiple neighborhood-based programs for income-qualified applicants through homeowner repair grants and loans and homebuyer down payment assistance. CDBG also supports neighborhood revitalization through public facility and engineering projects such as sidewalk repair and upgrades, repaving projects, and parts and playground creation and rehabilitation. The home portion of the plan focuses primarily on housing concerns. And in the early stages of our participation, we're focusing on home rehabilitation and homeownership. These programs will be administered by Department of Housing and Community Development staff.
The plan also provides funding to nonprofit community partners through subrecipient agreements. These organizations provide services to city residents and special needs groups such as our unhoused population, senior citizens, and area youth. Staff recommendation is for the consolidated plan and annual action plan to be adopted as presented during the public comment period. We've included the draft motion and resolution in your packets for the vote that is expected at the special session next week on August 12th. Approval of the plan will allow us to submit our formal application to HUD to release this entitlement funding. Do you answer any questions for you guys?
So I would, I would like to note that, again, the plan received public input, which I believe is huge. And I will reminisce by denying that at least acknowledge those in the gallery with signage about housing. As we all know, we passed the outdoor lodging ordinance that sparked a lot of conversation about housing. So I'm glad people are paying attention. Finally, we've been talking about this for a while. The city has put initiatives in for a long time, but now people are paying attention. So I want to address the goals of this plan according to those who've had something to say about housing. So housing priority, number one, that's listed in the plan. There is a need to increase the amount of affordable, decent, safe, sanitary, accessible, and sound housing for homebuyers, owners, and renters. The goals, housing improvements provide financial assistance to low and moderate-income homeowners and landlords with affordable housing to rehabilitate their existing owner and renter-occupied housing. And I'll go with some of these. Housing construction to increase the supply of affordable, decent, safe, sanitary, accessible, and sound housing to owners and renters in the city. Homeownership, anti-poverty actions reduce the isolation of income groups within areas with high concentrations of poverty through spatial deconcentration of housing opportunities for lower-income persons and minority persons in a spare housing acquisition and rehabilitation. Number two, homeless priority. There is a need for services and housing opportunities for homeless persons and persons or families at risk of becoming homeless. The goals, housing opportunities. Improve housing opportunities and living conditions for persons and families who are homeless or, or who are at risk of homelessness. Another goal, support and management services promote and assist programming offered by public agencies and nonprofit organizations that is directed toward helping persons who are homeless, who are, or who are at risk of homelessness. And another goal, homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. Promote and assist in anti eviction practices, rent utility assistance, and programs for rapid rehousing. So I encourage the, the communities to read this consolidated draft plan to address some of the comments that we as a body have received about the homeless population and the housing issues that we know is apparent. But again, the city is doing this where we can as an authority to make changes for the betterment of our community as a whole. And I want to thank you for coming back to the body to reiterate the importance of not only the home program and also shout out to legislators who funded, right? Scott recently funded that program. So there is action in place, and I thank you guys for pushing this forward.
Well said, Councilwoman. And I want to, I want to point out too, on the first page, the consolidated plan strategy. It's a housing, homeless, and community and economic development needs assessment is number one. Number two is a housing market analysis. And our, and three is our long-term strategy to meet these priority needs in Hagerstown. And I'm glad, I'm glad you're addressing that.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Chris with the Financial Incentive Agreement, Motherland Kitchen LLC. Now it's Doug, not Chris.
Yeah, subbing in for Chris today. So by, we have background, Motherland Kitchen LLC is located at 5557 South Potomac Street. It was previously awarded or approved by the city to receive grant funding of up to $34,329 under the Main Streets Startup Grant Program. Is a pass-through funded program under the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. It's Project Restore Grant Funding. Recently, the, the business was deemed ineligible, ineligible by the state after local approval due to determined vacancy length requirement of the property. The business owner is still underway to open a Afro-Caribbean restaurant in the Main Street District of downtown and has spent significant capital towards that. You might even have seen the signs outside the building now. That property was previously occupied by The Doghouse, which was another Main Street Project Restore grant recipient. So staff has viewed this as kind of caused by the, the Project Restore. It's intended to spur taking over vacant space. They took over 20 Public Square and, and break down the core of downtown. But it's also created a vacancy behind it as they've exited that, that previous space. So.
Can you say that one? So they're ineligible because of why?
It's, DHCD is determined as a vacancy length requirement. So they, they said, based on the time of the application of the lease, that that space wasn't eligible as of April 24. So they're not looking at it when they applied to the city. They're looking at when the city applied for the grant.
So the space had to be vacant for a certain period of time?
Correct.
Did they know that?
Who's they? The applicant? No, no. And the city didn't as, as well. It's the determination of the state in the way they were looking at the application. So the city and the applicant viewed it as a vacant property when the business applied to the city, but the state's looking at it for when the city applied for the grant funding. So that goes back to April of 24. The Doghouse vacated that space in October of, of 24 and and now Sabina's trying to get open with Motherland Kitchen at this point in time. So due to those circumstances, staff is seeking to enter into a financial incentive agreement with Motherland Kitchen LLC to replace the Main Street grant that is no longer applicable. The proposed financial incentive agreement would follow those same guidelines, requirements, and similar subrecipient agreement verbiage to remain consistent with the original approval. So included in the package, there's a motion, a resolution, and a financial incentive agreement. And if the Mayor and City Council would be supportive of a financial incentive agreement, that would be paid out of the economic incentives line item from the Economic Development Fund.
So I'm fine with it. Just one question. Is this funding kind of like a reimbursement matter? It doesn't have to be paid back like on behalf of Motherland Kitchen or?
So this is, there's two ports for the financial incentive. The ones, a, a portion of the rent would be paid on behalf of the business. There's a lease included in the packet. And there is also some eligible item reimbursements. So she would have to provide receipts of purchases before we reimburse her for those portions.
And that would be for the $34,329?
Yeah, and that would be up too. So she'd have to provide proof of those costs for us to be able to pay those payments.
Any other questions?
I'm good with it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. All right, City Administrator.
All right, Mayor. This is one of those weeks where if you can't find something to do in Hagerstown, you're not looking very hard. Wednesday midweek music and market, six to eight, University Plaza. The Eclipse International Band will be performing. They're a reggae group. Heard them before actually, and they are very good. Should be decent weather for tomorrow too. Still Smoking Barbecue will be the food truck and drinks and refreshments by Hub City Brewery and Church Street Distillery, six to eight tomorrow night. Also, the Encounter City Park Series continues Wednesday at seven at City Park Band Show. Stronger Together will be the performer. On Friday, Crumpies Donut Run from seven to nine down at the Crumpies Shop off First Street. That's a 5K to which 100% of the proceeds will go to Wounded Warrior Project and Mason Dixon Warrior Adventures. Community Yard Sale at Fairgrounds Park this Saturday, seven to two, 70-plus stalls for folks to, to browse through. And again, another real good, really well-attended event. Also Saturday, City Park Plein Art Festival, and that's Plein, P-L-E-I-N, not P-L-A-N-E. On Saturday, 10 to four at three locations, the Hager House, Mansion House, and Museum of Fine Arts. Sunday, Farmer's Market and Hub City Brewery, 12 to four. And finally, Sunday night, the Hagerstown Municipal Band, seven to eight thirty. Emma Shaki will be the featured bassoon soloist. So lots to do this week in Hagerstown. That's it for me.
On Bell.
The only thing I would like to say is thank you for those who came today and your signs or your voice. So we see you and we hear you. So thank you for coming today.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Nothing for me to name here.
Councilwoman Burnett.
I have something. So I just want to publicly thank our city administrator and staff for compiling the list of requested items this body wants to discuss, addressing a lot of the social issues that we are very well much aware of. We're listening and we're ready to take action where we can under our local authority. Because like we've mentioned at the last administration during the summer, there's a lot of things in place that this body cannot do. Where we'll need obviously the partners from our county and our state and even at federal level. So I know people think that the city can make all this magic happen with a snap of a finger. I wish that could happen, but that's not the case. So for that list that we as a body have come up with that we'll be discussing in the next few months, there will be sessions where it's going to be very long, and I really encourage those to watch these meetings. Come, come on Tuesday's live, watch it on YouTube. Just be engaged because I really do not like to see when stuff hits Facebook and there's a hit line of some sorts, some sort, and everyone is in reactive mode instead of being engaged in the process. Some of those items are updates to our lauterant transportation and nuance ordinances. Obviously, the outdoor logic ordinance, sunset review that a lot of you all are here for. Youth curfew and truancy, sober living home guidelines, certifications for property managers, non-local rental ownership standards, the vacant property tax, police transport responsibilities for minor injuries, Business Watch, Operation Take Back, homeless outreach and youth mentoring. There's many, many, many more things that I have not listed here that we will be taking a look at and discussing here publicly for everybody to know, to engage. And again. taking a look at and discussing here publicly for everybody to know, to engage, and again, thank you.
Councilwoman Flaherty.
Just gonna say, happy National Night Out, which I think a lot of us are gonna go to at 5:00 at the Fairgrounds, so I'll be there, and just thanking HPD for all they work to do for us every day, and well said, Councilmember Burnett about that, so that's all I got.
I have a couple. First off, if you haven't seen the newspaper, the Hagerstown Home Ownership Initiative was offering up to $7,500 in down payment closing cost assistance. To quote our amazing Amanda Gregg, we saw a record number of participation in FY25 with 68 homeowners taking advantage of this. 80 to 85% of those were first-time homebuyers. Amanda, if you can answer, is there still room left on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, appreciate it. Next, I want to give a shout-out to HPD. We ran a July initiative, and we, in zones identified for violent crimes, made 226 arrests in July alone. These initiatives were reduced, they have reduced to nearly zero at the end of July, so it went well. And also, 84 in the Church Street area. We want to work with, we also want to work with community partners on this for ideas and solutions to get longer-lasting results for this initiative. I also want to echo the National Night Out. Soon as I get done here, I'm going down there as well, so if anybody's got some sort of arm on them, they can, I'm gonna sit in a dunk tank, and they can see if they can put me in, so.
I'm trying.
Yeah. And that's it for me. So do I get a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Yeah, second?
Second.
Any discussion on any items tonight? Okay, we're adjourned.